Nice, okay. Yeah, alright. Uh, hi everyone, it's Carlos Codes. Today is day 2 of the "Learn Basic CSS by Building Cafe" menu. Got to step 40 last time, today I'm gonna do... I'd like to do the rest. I'm gonna see how it goes, I think it should be fine. Got my mouse working, I had a mic plugged in last time, I'm on a Chromebook here. Don't judge me please. Alright, go ahead and change both flavor and price class width to 50. It's not difficult. Okay. Submitting go. Whoa, all these articles. Surely there must be some way we can condense all of this into a single, you know, thing. Now that now it works, you can change the remaining article elements to match the first set by adding the... It doesn't match. Okay, I know it's wrong, but I'm just gonna continue to do this. Oh, article, oh, I can't speak. Oh, okay. I don't think I needed to do this, it doesn't say anything about adding flavor. Just kinda copying the other one. Um... Instead, all we're doing is, just... This right here. But then this happens. Maybe, yeah. Oh, start by adding, okay. So don't add the flavor yet then, that's all it's saying. Jeez, I gotta... Read everything, it's my fault. Man, this talks real loud. Next, position the other elements to be on the same line with no space between. I think that's what it means, like this. To complete this styling, Add the applicable class name "Flavor" and "Price" to be... Okay. Well, I should just do this, right? Just to save time. You just do this, that right there. I did that wrong. Okay, okay, Carlos. And then... Price, just... I forgot where it said, but I had read something that... Like, this, they have been told to not repeat themselves in coding. I wonder if this applies. I don't, it looks choppy, I don't like it. Um, recently I saw this thing that like, you can, I wanna break into tech as fast as possible. I'm not sure if this is like, the basics, so... I think I should just continue with this, but I wanna try getting a, um, like a data analyst pressure role. I had seen that, okay, let me focus on this instead. If you make the width of the page pretty smaller, you'll notice at some point some of the text up in the left starts wrapping around to the next line. What do you mean? Like this? It's because with p elements, change the class "Flavor". Okay, 75 and then 25. Hmm, okay. Not exactly sure what that does. I guess, makes it look smaller. You will come back to styling when you're a few tips, in a few steps, but for now, go ahead and add a second section below the first. Do you... Wait, where am I? Where am I? Okay. Oh. Okay, correct me if I'm wrong, but I feel like this is a little easy and straightforward. Of course, I'm gonna keep going down the list, but, I don't know. Seems kinda easy. I hadn't, I mean, I'm just following, you know, not solving any problems or anything, but I'm just following along, but... It's not that difficult so far. Add an empty article element under the dessert setting, give it a class attribute "Evalue Item". Oh. Missed 2 p elements outside of your article element. Oh, inside, I'm, I'm a little, little, little slow. Wait. Yeah, doesn't look right. Ohhh. I remember now. Yeah, 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 I know, I just said it's, it's kinda easy, but... Okay, call me crazy, I'm just gonna do this. Oh. Maybe not the whole thing, just, just right, right here, like that. Instead of donut, it's gonna be... Cherry pie. What have I done? Um... I was overzealous. Didn't even know what I would do. Okay, so far so good. Here. Code looks a little ugly. Maybe it's just 'cause it's kinda like small, so you know, has to condense itself a bit. Still, don't like it. No. 1, 2, 3, 4. Each one has to be its own article? Oh, yeah. It looks fine. Yeah. I don't like it, personally. Literally just copy this part. I'm weird, bro. What am I doing? You can give your menu space between the content. Very size, padding properties, give the menu class a padding-left with padding-right, the same value. Okay. Yeah. Looks pretty good so far. I feel like this is kind of a cheat sheet, what if I put it away? Try adding the same 20px padding to the top and bottom. So padding up, abouting, padding top and padding bottom. I'm gonna guess that's it. Yeah, that's it. Awesome. Since all 4 sides of the menu have the same inch girl spacing, go ahead and delete all 4 properties and use a single padding property. Yeah, yeah. The current width of the menu will always take up 80% of the body's... The body elements width, that's very wise, you can copy and insert, appear far away from the prices. Oh. Hmm, hold on. Mmm. Looks good, babe. Yeah. Add a max with property to the menu, the value of 500px. You can change the font family of text to make it look like, to look different from the font, font, font of your browser, each browser has some common fonts available to it. Change all of the text in your body by adding a font-family property with the sans-serif. Okay. So... Sorry you guys, oh man. I lose track of time when I'm talking to a certain someone. It is a bit boring for all the text to have the same font family, you can still have the majority of the text sans-serif, make just the h1 and h2 elements using a different selector. Style both the H1 and H2 elements using a single selector so that these elements you text use impact font. Okay, so... Hmm, thought I'd get it wrong. So what would this be? This? No, right? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Like that? Oh, wow. Yeah. I had no idea. Okay, make S20 text italicized by creating an established class selector. What do you mean? So the class would be, let me go back here. What is it asking? Oh, dang. What did I do to it? What did I, what, what? There it is. Okay, so what I'm guessing it is, is... Where is S20? Main... So BodyP?
Yeah. Sorry, I deleted. I thought you didn't saw it. But I will, I'm not sure what time I'm going back home. Well, I want you to know.
Okay, I love you. Oh, yeah. Okay. Oh my gosh, my dog. Okay, just let me know when you get back. And you can... No, no. Okay, just make sure you rest and you take a nap. Oh my gosh, he can talk. Okay, just let me know. No. Okay, good. Just remember to take a nap when you get home. He said he was tired. I don't want you... I don't want you feeling, you know, too bad today. I'm just gonna type it. Man, guys, I am... Alright, so saying an established class selector, so... I'm not exactly sure what there... This is wrong, but I just wanna see what it does. What? It's right. Okay. I don't like that it's right, cuz it doesn't look right. Now apply the established class selector to the... Oh! We have twenty-nine more to go. Add the typography of heading elements set by default in values of users browsers. Add two new type selectors. Oh, add two new type selectors. Okay, since this is not class selectors, I'm pretty sure it just wants me to do that. Then... What did I just do? Oh, man. Uh, add a footer element to the below, element below, um, the main element. Okay. Oh, 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 oh. Inside the footer, add a P element. Then nest an anchor in the P that links to... Man, the dog. Wait a minute, so... I'm not sure if this is right. I don't remember exactly. And then... This? I'm just guessing right now. It's not right. nested within your new P. And you should have exactly one A element. Mmm! Okay, guys, don't flame me. I'm just thinking about this. Trying to remember what, how to anchor. Maybe... Maybe this? Alright, anchor self-closing. Let me look up here just to... Yeah, nothing. I was just, um, referencing my old work. Add a P element to nest an anchor element in the P that links to... Let me preview it real fast. Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Ah, okay, okay, okay. I remember. Oh! Add a second P element. Um... Trying to finish by nine. Uh, dang, my dog, dang! Oh, shit. Oh, I just cursed. I apologize for that. I'm not cutting it out. I'm just leaving it there. Sorry, y'all. Sorry for anyone who sees it or hears it. Okay, add a second P element below the one with the link and give it the text. Oh! One, two, three, three, four, oh! You can use an HR element to display divider between section and different contents. You can use HR element to display divider between sections. You can use hr element to display divider between sections and different content. I gotta shave, bro, my face. Ah, guys, I'm only 21 and I just... This stuff grows so fast. I hate it. I gotta shave like every two days. I mean, I wanna grow a beard eventually, but while I'm young, you know, I wanna be a fresh young man, you know? This is just not it for me personally. You can use, okay, sorry, sorry. Add an hr element between the p elements with the class established. Between? So, okay, I think I understand what it's saying. And the first section element. So it's saying like... Oh gosh. Like this? And then... That's the first section. Wait, where is it? Yeah. And the established section. Where's that s to 2020? Like this, I'm hoping. Check it? Wrong. You should add an hr element. Oh! So this? Super long. Kind of... Kindly, kindly, kindly. I really hope that I don't get like destroyed. Okay, already ate 10, come on, we got like how many more? 25 or more? We can do it. It's been done before, come on. Um, add an hr element between the p element with the class established. Oh, between, oh... Oh, I can't be singing that. I'm sorry. Yay, I'm sorry. Please do not, please do not, please. I just liked your music. Alright, um, the default properties of an hr element will make it appear as thin as gray line. You can change the height of the line by specifying the value of the height property. Okay, okay. Usually a selector there. Oh wait. Yeah. Okay, I love you. Have a good rest of your day at school. Bye. Shaky foot lady. But how does she know I screenshotted it? Hold on a second. I don't care y'all. I wanna marry this woman. But I also wanna be a provider, so... I know it's looking bleak with this, you know, terrible stuff. My terrible coding, but I believe... If I put my energy towards it enough, if I make it a consistent thing every day, I can probably... The gray edges or colors along. Oh yeah, yeah, I see. If I consistently work towards it every day, I'll be able to, um, get there. I don't wanna go too deep into it. It's kinda personal. My finances. I don't really spend a lot of money. My lifestyle is, um, I buy, you know, I have regular steaks and eggs every single week, um, but... I work at Amazon, bro. Like, that's not... Like, I just, I'm off right now. That's why I'm able to study so much. Cause I injured my back there. And yeah, gonna keep studying while I'm out. Um, cause I really wanna do this, you know, it's probably mentally draining, but I'd rather destroy my mind than my body personally. Plus I like these. It's like solving problems. Not, not really, but more like just, you know? Doing step by step by step. Eventually I'm gonna be on my own. Earlier this kinda problems, it was like, do this. Energy didn't tell me, like, added the anchor thing. The anchor thing in the href. I didn't remember everything, but we're getting there. We're getting there. I didn't even look it up. Promise. I didn't look at my phone or anything. I just remembered the href. I was like, hmm, what if we put that? So yeah, it's starting, starting to like spoon-feed us that, those questions. Like, do this. Which I really like. Change the height property of the hr to be two pixels, so the height of it. Oh, because... Yeah, I understand. Go ahead and add another hr element between the main element and the footer. Oh! I'm blind. Like I said, the future's bleak. Pray for me all. Um... I don't know if I'll be posting anything on a Easter Sunday. Because that morning I'm gonna be going to church, I think. And then I know for sure, bro, that dog right here. Okay, anyways, to create a little more room around the menu, sorry ADHD, um, add 20 pixels of space on the inside body element. Come on, 19. And it's 8:19. I wanna finish before nine, preferably. And this is like this huge improvement for me. Because, um, I've not been doing like a lot of steps every day. I've been progressing like exponentially so far. I know it doesn't look like it, but I am. I can see my own growth. First day, second day, third day, fourth day. We're doing more and more, taking on more work every day. Focusing on the main menu items and prices, there is a fairly large gap between each line. Use the existing selector that targets all the p elements. So item p, that one. Yeah, 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 item. And set their top and bottom margin to... Bro, that dog. It's Bruno, but still. Focusing on the main menu items, there's a fairly large gap between each line. So what would it look like? It's obviously here, but... So what if I do this? Margin top? Is that a thing? Margin bottom? Okay, I forgot to add that thing. I apologize. Okay, it's tiny now. I like it. Using the same style selector in the previous step, make the font size of the items and prices larger by using a value of 18. So what? The other larger for sure. Dang, I can hear him. My Bruno. Changing the margin bottom to 5px looks great. However, this is the same and roll. And the menu item and the second hr element does not match the top. Yeah, that's, that's true. So I'm guessing it would be like margin top property. This is wrong, but need to see why. Bottom line selector, margin top. Yeah, creating a class. I am like I said, y'all. I don't see it. Second one, yeah, by the footer. Yeah, I gotta close it now. Oh. Hmm. Oh, no! It's wrong, but why? Oh, what? Oh, what? A comment is like. Like that? Looking down the footer, make all the elements. Or make all the texts that have a value of fourteen. Yeah, yep, purple. So. So would it be? Subselector is the one that changes from link isn't visited. So.
I love.
Yes, mom. I'm doing homework now. I'm doing this right now, I'm done maybe in ten or twelve minutes. Okay. Okay. So A visited. Oh, I am. Yeah, yeah. Look that, looks pretty cool. Ten more, come on. Who do you think you are? I am, I don't know. Sub selectors. Just the anchor point or whatever element. And visited hover active. So visited to black. Menu text camper cafe has a different space from the top than the dresses spaces. In the dresses space at the bottom of the menu, this is due to the browser having some default top margin of the H one element. Change the top margin of the H one element to zero to remove all top. So it's. I have no problem doing it, I just sometimes I just need to understand like. Why heard? Oh, we know margin top. I put that wrong, double. Six, to remove some of the vertical space between the H one. And the text S twenty twenty. Establish, change the bottom margin of the H one to fifteen. So. Alright, we're wrapping up here, now the top. Spacing looks good, the space below the address. At the bottom of the menu is a little bigger than the space at the top of the menu and H one element. To decrease the default margin below the address P element. Created class selector named address and use. Oh, class selector. Four, and system four, and the last four. Now apply. The address class to the P element. Clean this should just one, two, three. Three, the menu looks good, brother, than brother than the coffee background images just. Under the coffee heading add. An image using. Is image IMG, I think it is, right? Ahref. Okay, I don't believe this is right. SRC attribute, see, I did not remember that. Hmm, okay. SRC on the image, okay. Auto. I put bottom and top, bro. Two more. Add one last image under the desserts heading. Okay, now I remember. What, what did I? I'm a little slow guys. One more, let's finish strong. It'd be nice if the vertical space between the H two and the H. The associated icons was small, the H one has to have default top and bottom margin space, you could. Change the top bottom hmm to zero or another number. Simply add a negative top margin. Yay, hundred! Yeah, buddy! Woo! Sorry. No! I do apologize, I'm currently kind of employed. Awesome, only took us like... Uh... Like a little under two hours. Alright. Boom, done, awesome! And tomorrow we'll start on... Yeah, I'm gonna do all of them, all of them. I really gotta hunker down and start it. Tomorrow I might start earlier and just try to do this whole thing, like how... How long is this one? Sheesh! It's getting longer and longer. Oh, nevermind. It's the basics though, guys, gotta learn somehow, you know? Yep. Almost, almost done, guys, not really. We have like... One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen more projects to go. The current way we're going, we're not gonna be able to finish within like a month, so... I'd like to really do all of these tomorrow. If I can't, you know, at least let me get to like... Seventy. If we can get to make, pull to like seventy tomorrow, we'll be fine. And then... And then, yeah. Be good to go. Let me see. If we can hit seventy tomorrow, the next day we can do the other thirty and start this one up to like thirty right here. No, but I wanna keep it like one video. We'll see, we'll see. I'll make it a separate video then, that's fine. Alright, but I'll talk with you guys later. Carlos Codes, this is honestly been kind of fun, I know. I get distracted, but like, I actually enjoy this so far. First two projects down. Next we're doing this one. See you guys tomorrow with Learn CSS Colors by Building a Set of Colored Markers. Alright, y'all have a great one. Goodnight.